City Council to order, and we'll start with our roll call.
City Clerk.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Duper?
Present.
Councilman Papescu?
Here.
Mayor Protempore Lennart?
Here.
Mayor Rigsby?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a quorum. We had no closed session, so we will begin with our invocation and pledge of legions led by Mayor Protempore Lennart. Please stand.
Father heaven, we thank you once again for your love for us and your watching, hearing, and guidance. We pray your presence here and the blessings upon us in regards to decisions that will best or for all our lives. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
Very good. Then we have two requests for public comment, and if anyone else would like to make a comment, there are comment request cards at the back, or if you want to just come up after these two have spoken, you can do that, too. We like to limit our people to three minutes, but we get so few public comments, we sometimes go over because we like public comment. So our first request is from Vaughn Nelson.
Good evening. Thank you. My wife Becky and I own a townhome over in Brittany Place, have lived there about seven years, and we love living in the neighborhood. Except, in the last few months, I think since about November, there's been an electric humming noise that is actually just about to drive us crazy at this point. We've kind of gone through the whole house and everything, turned off all the electricity, looked for battery, you know, we've gone up and down. And the best we can figure is that when the noise is coming from a couple of the high voltage boxes that are very close to our place. And since the noise, the beginning of the noise corresponds to the time when the upgrades were done on the high power lines that went through, we're just wondering if maybe it has something to do with that. And so we're here to at least register the complaint in case there are other people that are experiencing this, but also to just ask for assistance in knowing where we could go to address this. It's actually becoming a little desperate at this point. It's 24 hours a day and losing sleep, at least one of us is losing sleep over it and sanity, so. Do you have recommendations on?
Do other people hear the hum in your house, or do you have tinnitus?
No, no, it's not that. We've had some friends over to listen for it, they hear it. I can hear it when I concentrate. My wife has much better hearing than I, and so it's a high sensitivity issue for her, but I can definitely also hear it when I'm listening for it. Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. I'll do that. Thank you. So when we go outside, we can hear it, too. It's really interesting because when we go up to the boxes, the volume is not high, but the frequency, I think, is such that it carries really well. So inside the house, sometimes it increases outside. When we're, like, last night, we were walking around the neighborhood, and we found a bunch of boxes, and there's different levels of, the frequency is all the same, but the level of noise is different. The ones close to our house are loud, and when we stand there, especially at night, there is, I can hear the humming outside as well.
There's probably.
Yeah, we've been checking, we're gonna check with some more neighbors as well.
Probably a resonant frequency with one of your walls.
That's what I wondered. It feels like in the house, it's almost louder even though it's coming from outside.
It's like you're, one of your walls is like a drum for that frequency.
I wondered about that, yeah.
I don't know if this helps or applies or not, but my understanding is that the current poles are temporary, correct? So.
Oh, really?
They moved from the old poles to the temporary poles, then they're gonna.
The skinny ones.
Rebuild the main poles again, and then they moved the wires back. So I don't know if something in that, maybe.
Okay. That's helpful.
And I don't know if I'm just crazy, but there's lights now blinking at the top of those poles that were never there before. Have you guys noticed that?
I haven't noticed the lights, but I'll look for it.
But it's the same light as the other, the existing poles that were there before. I just thought that was interesting, so.
It's to keep airplanes and helicopters.
I know, but it was never there before. That's my point, like, what prevented it then. But anyway, just interesting. So, yeah, I don't know if that, but.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, we like to help fight the evil Edison for you. Okay, the next speaker, Laura Miro?
Murrow.
Murrow.
Good evening. So I just recently moved from Beaumont to Loma Linda, but I have lived in Loma Linda previous when I was younger, and I did attend school down here. So I just moved into a new place off of Redlands Boulevard in Mountain View. And before I moved into the property, I had asked, because it's close to the freeway in regards to the noise, and they assured me that, I guess, there is, Caltrans has approved to put the sound wall up in regards to that area, is what I was advised. So one, I'm confirming that with the city, because all the tenants there have said that that is something that's supposed to, I guess, get started in late November with a completion date of 18 months. So furthermore, also, I'm checking into that because I did ask about the noise level, because we are right there. But I didn't realize the magnitude of the safety issue. So literally, with the inundation of the homeless, there's the one issue. They walk in the small wash that's behind there, and multiple times, you know, I'm home alone with my son, and I see them back there. So it's, you know, no privacy whatsoever. Second is, they, the cars have the ability, there's no delineators there, so there's nothing to stop if someone fell asleep, or, you know, drunk driving or whatever is happening, that would come off the freeway. And literally, kids are probably 40 to 50 feet away from that that are playing, and I didn't realize the magnitude of that. We just recently moved there, but we were assured that this was something that was going to take place. So, one, my concern is obviously the safety, but two, since we just moved there, and we've been living there for a total of three weeks, you know, the noise pollution, the decimal level is like off the charts. And we were told that, you know, no, you know, even from the manufacturer that built the home, we spoke with them, and they reassured us, the park reassured us, but it's really not true. So before I jump ship and make another very costly move, one, I'm asking the city if that's true, that Caltrans is proposing the wall and is going to be building that. Maybe I can tolerate it until October, or what can you guys do for me?
What is your address?
It's 25526 Redlands Boulevard. It's in the Alto Camino Mobile Home Park.
I mean, there's two issues there, so.
Right. Let me respond real quick regarding the sound wall for Caltrans. Right now, Caltrans has no plan to build a sound wall.
Okay.
That I know of. And the, they do have a plan to widen the freeway, but right now, they stop at the I-10 and 15 freeway, hasn't going east yet.
Okay.
So when they widen the freeway, of course, the lane will be even closer to the Mobile Home Park, and they might build a wall, but they don't have timeframe at this time.
So then, the advisement from the Mobile Home Park that, I guess, has attended these meetings, and there's been three other individuals that live inside of there that have also attended these meetings that has confirmed that. So then, those statements are false.
Well, we need to follow up with Caltrans.
He'll need to find out, because maybe they told your people but didn't tell our people.
Yeah, they didn't tell us. Yeah, right. So I need to follow up with Caltrans and to see.
So my other question is, is because the park has rules in regards to privacy, what you can and can't do, right, because it's private land? I'm here also, then, if Caltrans is not going to be doing something, or you guys are confirming that, delineators. I think I should have the right to at least protect that someone cannot come through that easily and, you know, harm. I mean, my back bedroom is literally probably 25 feet away. 40 feet from that is where all these kids play. I work off of the freeway, and I don't know if you guys have seen it in the paper, the lady just died. She came off of the freeway, came down into the embankment, and we literally took her pulse, and she passed away. She was this close from the parked car that was in our business establishment. That is the second time that that's happened. So as a parent, probably you guys have children, that is my number one concern. As far as my sleep, I'm dealing with that. I have some investments that I'm doing to protect and insulate in a different fashion, but the safety is the number one thing that I'm going for.
Did you include your phone numbers or email addresses?
I can, absolutely. I don't think I put the, can I approach?
Yeah, please do. We don't bite.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. This coach was just replaced. It's a brand new one. It's 2019, and I am right here.
So you're right against the off-ramp.
Yes. So when they, they create or anything happens, I mean, they're literally barreling through there. So if you look, this little, right here, this, these four or five homes right here all have children. This person does, and these people over here have grandkids. They all congregate right in front of my home. They ride their scooters. So it is literally all the way across this part. I'm sure there's something down here as well, too, but obviously, I live in the middle. So the only thing I see is from here to this way.
So the widening of the lanes of the prison are not gonna affect the off-ramp, but they're gonna be working out.
But they've already done that. Yeah. Who told you that there was a wall that was going to go up?
It was the Mobile Home Community. Both when we signed lease, before we even signed, we asked those questions. What is the noise level? When we did a walkthrough, what was the noise level? No, the noise level is not that bad. You get used to it. TV's on, things of that nature. That was a complete lie. Decimal level is off the charts. If I could find somebody that had a company that could go inside and take the decimal level, there is no way that you would able, to be able to sleep. I'm actually not even sleeping in that bedroom. I'm sleeping at the bedroom that's adjacent to the front, that's closer to the street side. When you have a trucker that goes by, it literally rattles at home. It's insane. And I came from a 3,400 square foot home. I paid for that thing in cash, because this is California, right? I want to go on vacation. I don't want to work my whole entire life, and to simplify life. And this has not really simplified it, especially with the concern of my son. I have four kids. I've worked extremely hard, and I paid for that in cash. I'm sorry, I usually don't cry, but.
About a wall going up in that region? I mean, I haven't heard of anything, but you're on SBCTA.
Well, they're working on widening to 10. That's probably the latest thing, but that's so far east.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That it's not going to affect that. So maybe they do have plans, but it's kind of odd that they haven't asked us, because they, don't they have to get our permission?
Well, that's all Caltrans right away, and that.
So they can do whatever they want.
I was gonna ask about that drainage, that drainage ditch. Is that ours, or is that, that's all theirs, too? So.
Yeah, so Jarb knows everybody in Caltrans. He'll help you out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. And you are, do you have a card? Okay. Somebody have a card? I appreciate your guys' time. Thanks. I usually am not a crier, so it gets on the heartstrings, so I apologize. So no card? I'll just wait for you? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other public comment? This is your chance. Come on. State your name and your address, if you know it.
I'm Steve Sibler. I live at the 26,000 block of Lawton Avenue, and I'm a part of Next Door, the website that kind of, it's a community thing, but there isn't a lot on there. And one issue that kind of, I wrote Councilman Duper about the public safety. I'm just wondering, because Loma Linda seems to be moving east, like, to New Jersey, are we getting a bigger police force? Or we just still have basically two units per shift?
So we can't discuss the amount of law enforcement that's out. It's not, it's not that. It's considerably more, but we can't discuss that, because potentially, you understand how the rest of the citizens here probably wouldn't want to tip off anybody that's inappropriate.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. No, those are great questions, and over the last couple of years, we've added to our law enforcement contract. But we'd also like to introduce you to our recently promoted, but thankfully staying with us, Chief of Police, Matt Griffith. And he actually knows about your situation. We talked about it a little bit earlier in the robbery that you're talking about, and so he can probably help you a little bit more, and he knows about the upcoming Coffee with a Cop thing and Neighborhood Watch stuff that's been discussed, but, absolutely, but feel free to ask any questions.
I mean, my other comment, as you mentioned in your email about the ride-along, do we still have a ride-along program and a, are citizens on patrol?
Yes.
Facility?
Yes, and his office would be the ones to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. You'll enjoy it, I promise you.
I think the TV show is done, though, right? Cops. Phil was a famous cop on that TV show, so if you look at old reruns, you'll see him when he was a little bit younger.
Yeah, they're actually in color. Just to expand on what the gentleman's bringing forward, last week, and I don't want to get too into it, I spoke to the detectives, and I know they're working on some leads, but there was a robbery at the Carl's Jr. He wasn't a successful robbery, and so their hypothesis is that the criminal, because he was not successful, started driving around looking for whatever fast cash he could, encountered some of our residents on foot and robbed them. So we'd like to say it's an outlier, and those types of things don't happen very often. Matt can weigh in if he wants to jump in, but overall, we still are fairly safe compared to neighboring communities, correct, Matt?
Very much, yeah. This is a situation that's a little bit of an anomaly. We don't have armed robberies generally. Burglaries periodically, as you all know, we do have those, and we aggressively get on those. This, I mean, the original robbery that occurred was kind of, kind of suspect in its design. It's kind of dumb to be in a car and try to rob people that are inside, because obviously, he just ducked down and shut the window. So it wasn't really a criminal mastermind, and I agree probably that they just then continued on looking for people, and, you know, unfortunately, with our proximity to other cities, those kind of people do tend to drive into town every once in a while, and so just something that we have to deal with, and we're on it aggressively, so.
Okay, any other public comment? Looks like everybody from the public who is here has spoken, so. Our first item, number one, is a public hearing, Council Bill R-2020-04, confirming an annexation into a landscape maintenance district. So Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the request for annexation, I mean, not, landscape assessment district for the Lennart home, which is track 18990. And the, the city received petition from the property owner to annex the landscape maintenance district.
This is one of the districts that's pre-existing?
No, this is for the new subdivision, which right now, Lennart Home kind of owned the whole thing, so they wanted to make sure that.
As they complete sections, they move them into the.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And this one has inflationary adjustments? Okay, so they'll actually pay their freight? Okay, good.
Question. The city clerk has the ballot on this?
Well, there's a question.
We need to have the public hearing first.
Okay. There's a question.
Question is, I've mentioned two or three times that I feel that the landscaping maintenance in the city is in decline, and I can be specific. And so when we're adding more property, I want to be sure, I'm not convinced we have an adequate Public Works Department to sustain the landscaping maintenance needs that we have now. And again, I can give you specific examples of where I'm frustrated. And so my question is, if we already have an abundance of work for minimal staff, convince me this isn't going to add to that problem.
What this does is, what happening is, the first, right now, this annexation will be number 76, but the problem that we have is the first 58 district of landscape assessment district never have any cost escalation in it. So when it came in, like, my track, 35 years ago, we paid the same amount for the landscape assessment district, even though the cost is going up and up and up, but we never have cost escalation compared to the one from 59 to 75 have cost escalation. So when the cost of living adjustment, CPI increase, the property owner had to pay a little bit more. So right now, the burden is, is from 59 to 75, and we can't really help pay for the first 58 district neither. So to increase those, we have to go back to the voters and ask for, ask them for an increase in the landscape assessment district.
So let me be more specific. If you're coming west from Redlands on Barton Road.
Yes.
We have a "Welcome to the City of Loma Linda" sign in front of that hospital, and from there forward, it's weeds.
Yes, yes.
It's all weeds.
And that's something that I've been fighting, you know, not fighting, working on every day, but it's, we had to pick and choose which area we're gonna.
So that one is not a landscape maintenance district. That is the direct requirement of the university to do that.
No, not anymore, not anymore.
So we took it over.
We took it over, yes.
Okay, and why can't, why don't we have enough staff to weed it?
We contract that out. I just need to follow up with the contractors and get them done, so.
So it sounds to me like, I hear a motion to increase the budget for Public Works. That's what I hear.
If that's what it takes. I'm trying to understand the problem first, but if it's a money issue, then yeah, I think that should be considered.
When we agreed to take that property over, the university's funding that, right?
And it's not only the.
Yeah, but we actually have to hire people to make it happen.
Where all the apartments are, it looks even worse.
But are they giving us the money? My point is, if they're giving us the money, then it's our fault.
They better be, yeah.
And we put compost granite, and when rain, it's still, weeds are growing on it.
Yeah, and there's more weeds than granite, right?
Yes.
And, but then, that next block beyond that light at New Jersey, I think it is.
Yeah.
That looks even worse.
Okay.
And that's, I can go on with more illustrations.
The whole Barton Road, weeding is a bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, again, I'm not opposed to this, but I want to be sure we have the resources that we need to make this city look manicured and maintained. And I'm not suggesting that's your fault. I'm just an observer here.
Oh, I, like you, I live here in town, so I drive on every street every day, so I.
But he already admitted he's paying less, because he's part of the original group.
So to me, the question is, the question is, do we starve out all the work in landscape maintenance districts 1 through 58 in order to make everybody so disgusted that they will pass their own tax increase? Or do we just give up and pay for it out of the general fund? That's the question.
We have been. As a matter of fact, we have been taking money out of general fund to help pay for LMD, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
The alternative, the alternative is to basically stop mowing, stop weeding, let the whole place go to pot, you know, like, three quarters of town, and then put up signs saying, "If you would only raise your taxes, we could weed this place." But what are the chances of that work, that's working? Probably zero. Okay, so I think we kind of support what you're doing, subsidizing that, and we learned our lesson, and we always put inflationary, you know, increases on the districts.
I prefer that, too, because I live in town, so I will be here for my neighbors if I don't do anything.
But what we probably, I think what we're asking for is for you to come back with a proposal to increase the staffing of Public Works in order to maintain the landscaping in this town. Either bodies or contracts, either one. Okay?
Now, what I'm doing right now, I'm doing the budget, I'm doing the budget for Nick Fiskew right now.
It's perfect time.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think now we'll go, if you have no further questions.
So, when I come back for a budget in May, so look for that, so.
So that sounds like a good strategy for item I-8. I also have a question on I-9. I don't understand it, and I read the.
We're not there, yeah, we're still on item one, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so I think now what we need to do is open the ballots and see if the landowner wants to do this. Go ahead.
Well, did you formally open the public hearing?
I formally opened the public hearing. So are we gonna have the public speak first, or, okay. Now, public come forward and speak on the landscape maintenance district for the new Lennart Homes just west of California Street. Come on up.
Steve Sibler again. My question is, were the old post offices, and there's that field, is that privately owned, or is that Loma Linda?
The one in front of the, in front of the post office?
You know, the old post office on Newport?
Yeah.
And east of that before Bryn Mawr? Is that field there Loma Linda owned, or is it?
You're talking about the one at the corner of Bryn Mawr and Newport? That is privately owned.
Oh, okay. How do we get them to?
There've been a couple of proposals to develop that, but unfortunately, the way they want to do it would impact the traffic, so.
Oh, okay.
They haven't moved very far in the development, because we're holding pretty steady with how we manage the traffic flow. But the owner is subject to maintaining the weeds, and we have, I'm sorry, I forgot the new name.
That's item number two.
He's maintaining the weeds.
No, no, the name of the new department, Community Prevent.
Community Risk Reduction. It's the same initials as our trash company.
That's it. Community Risk Reduction, basically the Fire Marshal's Office. They go through twice a year, and any property owner that doesn't maintain their property, we go in and we fix it, and then we charge them a bill for it, so.
My other question is, community service, is there a way we can petition the? My other question is, community service, is there any way we can petition the San Bernardino Court for getting, uh, community service done for?
So, I, I gotta tell you, I, that, that was, um, that was a suggestion here that happened a couple of years ago, um, I'm not in favor of that.
Oh.
And, uh, my personal feeling is that what you do is you invite a certain element into town.
Okay.
And it may, it may look like free labor, um, but then it ultimately translates into, hey, I'm gonna come back and go shopping later.
Okay, well.
So.
It's just, you know, 'cause I walk that Mountain View, Barton, Newport, Bryn Mawr, Lawton.
That, that's just my opinion, I, I'm, I'm not sure what our esteemed law enforcement feels, but probably similar to, to that. And unfortunately, the people in the, in the justice system now are not the same people that were in the justice system thirty, forty years ago. So, no, the people that give community service are really people we don't really want.
Oh, okay, well, I just thought.
But it's a great idea, I get, I get your, believe me, we get your point.
Okay.
We've, we've debated this before.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
But, but ultimately, he's asking about the weeds in that lot.
Yeah.
Fire department is gonna be inspecting, and if he doesn't clean it out, then there'll be a penalty.
And that's item number two on our agenda today. But, back to item number one, um, we have the public hearing, any other comments from the public? Okay, so I close the public hearing before we do the vote. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now, we will count the votes. There's a parenthesis around the S.
We have twenty, twenty-eight ballots? All twenty-eight are voted yes.
Wow. Our recent election was not that way.
What, so, um, those are, just, just to clarify, those are brand-new homeowners? No, it's affected around the area, right? What is it, like a one-mile radius?
It's, it's not the, the homeowners, it's the prob, the property owners, like, uh, is it Lennar, Lennar Homes? They're still currently the property owners.
So, they just wrote the letter twenty-eight times?
They're, they're joining the district, then the, the people who buy the houses have no choice.
Okay, so we will be maintaining that as the city, but they will be paying us an adequate amount of money to cover the costs of our maintaining it.
We have an option, if we decide to, but, but this one, they didn't pick that option, if they can do it themselves as homeowner association, and then we can just do the inspection.
They're all voted yes in favor of the assessment proposed for Zone Seventy-six and the new assessment for the property shown above, and they all include the, uh, parcel numbers, um, including the annual inflation adjustment applicable to future assessments based on the percentage change in the CPI.
So, there was not an HOA?
No.
Option?
KB, KB has an HOA, but Lennar does not. Okay, so now, what we need to do is, uh, move in second, Council Bill R dash twenty twenty dash zero four, confirming this annexation, since they voted yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, thank you. Now, item number two, public hearing, Council Bill R dash twenty twenty dash zero three, they went in reverse order, but that's okay. This was because it was continued from an earlier meeting, and it's about the costs of the fall weed abatement program from last year.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff, yeah, this is a continuation, uh, from February's meeting due to the error with some of the parcels having the wrong, um, abatement costs associated with it. So, we went ahead on February thirteenth, and all the property owners who hadn't paid up to that point, we resented out invoices with the appropriate amounts. Uh, lo and behold, we actually got two more residents, or not residents, but property owners that came in and paid their invoices, so we're down to a grand total of eleven that have not paid their invoices, so I'm, uh, making a motion to go ahead and with the costs related to the twenty-nineteen fall weed abatement, to, uh, place the, uh, the assessments on the parcels to pay for those costs.
So, we're gonna lean on them?
Yes, sir.
So, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move it.
The public hearing was already heard, do we need to ask if anyone would like to speak this time?
Yes, since those were re-noticed.
Okay, so it was re-noticed, so I'm opening, opening the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this topic? No one's getting up, so I'll close the public hearing, and then we, uh, make the vote.
The property that we were just questioning about, is that included in this?
Yes, sir, yeah, it's definitely on our list, uh, every year, um, you know, typically in the fall, it, it's more tumbleweeds. Do, yeah, you know, 'cause in the spring, when we do it, that's when the, the rain, you know, stops, and that's where you had the actual vegetation on the property. Took a step further this year as, as well, I don't know if you guys have noticed, um, not only did we take care of the weeds, but we also took care of all the, uh, the dead trees and limbed up all the trees. So, if you notice, like, the property between DeVille Manufacturing and the strip mall there, they no longer have trees there, they had an encampment that was living there, 'cause they like to hide in there, so we got rid of that. The, uh, old drive-in theater was another one of my concern with encampments in there, so we limbed up all the trees, so they can't hide in there anymore, and various other properties, so we took a step further to really try to mitigate that fire hazard with boring fires in the winter.
Jared, I'd pointed out a tree, or had a citizen point out a tree to me on, uh, Anderson. What, what, that was taken care of? Okay, thank you. They did it, okay, good.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Council Bill?
I move it. Council Bill twenty twenty dash?
Zero three.
Zero three.
I'll second.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Congratulations.
Okay, sir, when you do your job, you'll have a clear lot here pretty soon.
Well, I have another concern that is probably up, the trimming trees along the sidewalks.
Come on up.
Is there a certain height?
You have to come up, though, 'cause the people can't hear unless you're on the microphone. People at home.
Because I, I walk my dogs all over the eastern above Barton, and I, I'm walking on sidewalks, and I'm constantly hitting my head, is there, I don't wanna say a law, is there some sort of height that the trees have to be, or bushes have to be trimmed at? I know, sometimes it's six feet, or?
Yes.
I've had the same question, thank you for asking.
If, if you email me, or take a picture when you walk, like I do, and, and then just email to myself, email me, and I will go out, look at it, and if needed.
Can I, can I just send you the streets so that I have trouble with, instead of?
Sure, sure, yes.
'Cause I'll be taking pictures all day long.
Yes, yes, and that's the same, the same comment, I have with, with weeds everywhere, is we have a lot of street and, and, and to cover, and we all have so much staff, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work you're doing on the sidewalks where the trees roots have gone over, and I think there's eight spots right in my basic neighborhood, I don't know how many more sidewalk sections are pulling up.
Right, we, we have replaced a sidewalk right now.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know before they're grinding them down. Okay, thank you.
I thought you had to get elected to City Council to fix sidewalks. Okay, the consent calendar is fairly long, and you wanted to poll number nine?
Number eight.
Okay, so let's, uh, discuss number eight, what's your question?
Basically, can you, I read the staff report and got confused, can you just explain that to me?
What it is, is, is that, number eight is, uh, Sea Country, which is, which is the subdivision at the southeast corner of California and Orange.
California and Orange?
Yes.
And it says citrus.
Citrus, I'm sorry, citrus. So, they completed that, they completed the, uh, the street improvement, uh, uh, pavement, street lighting.
Yeah.
So, so the city is now accepting that, so become, they have to maintain it for, for one year after the City Council approve it tonight, and then after one year, then the city take over.
Okay, so the, who maintains it for the first year?
They are.
The, the, the people that did the?
The homeowner association.
Okay.
And, and the, the builders, the builders.
Okay, and then that reverts back to the city?
Correct.
And, again, same question, we have the resources to continue to assess and maintain that?
And, and, and that will be something that I have to keep adding on, because we can have, in addition to this, we have KB Home, we have Lennar Home.
That's where I'm going.
And then the Park, Lennar Home, we have, is it thirty acres of parks?
Yeah, no, and that, that's exactly my question.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm expecting that, uh, next year's budget, we're gonna have more built-in for Public Works to sustain that, okay. Thank you for that, uh, and then number nine.
Yes.
Basically, the same question, I read the staff report and...
Number nine is, is, is a property on the, on the south side of, of Barton Road.
Yeah.
We have a new property owner, just bought a vacant lot, it's been vacant for a long time, so what they did is they put up that, the white fence.
Which lot, that's, that's?
The white fence, you see, they wanted, just put up the fence?
No, I haven't been over there for, I haven't been over there for weeks. So, they just put up a fence?
Yes, the white fence, on the south side.
South side of campus?
It's way west of, of campus. It's right by the S-curve.
Okay.
But they just put up the fence, it's right next to your, the driveway to your father-in-law house.
Yeah.
So, what happening is, at one time, the, when, when this, the area was in the county of San Bernardino, they asked for the right-of-way for the street that were why. And, and so, this new property owner came back and asked, well, the city, do you plan to widen, widen Barton Road on the south side? And the answer was, no, we, it's gonna be pretty much lined up with existing.
Yeah.
So, therefore, as part of the, uh, the code, we have to give the property back to the property owner, because we're not gonna do any, any street improvement.
Oh, I see, okay, that's the part I didn't understand.
So, so it's twenty feet, give the twenty feet back.
So, he just gained some property?
Correct.
For free?
Well, it was seized to begin with, we just asked for the, but it can.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, so what's your pleasure on the entire consent calendar? Okay, number fifteen.
Clarification on regarding the park, um, number fifteen, the one with Lennar Homes on Citrus Trails. You said the approximate cost of the park was four point six million dollars. How many acres are they developing for that amount?
About thirty.
So, that's the full amount for both?
No, sorry, fifteen for theirs, and, and the other fifteen is coming, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, I thought the park was forty acres.
Theirs is a little smaller.
That portion is thirty, and the other part is spread out nearby, okay?
Yes.
So, you're, they're basically developing the whole park, even though half of that is in the land that belongs to us?
They're developing the South Park, the one right on Mission Road.
Okay.
And the cent, the east half of the Central Park. The west half of the Central Park would be developed when the, the, the former redevelopment.
So, the four point six million only includes their portion of their?
Their portion, the South Park and the east half of the Central.
So, that means that the full park could be up to ten million dollars, when it's all said and done?
Uh, would not be, assuming that all the amenities that go into the west half, it could be well over ten million.
Okay, so, from, if I understood the staff report correctly, we're only generating about two point eight million from the development fees, which is still short of the four point six, so this agreement would in, ensure that they pony up another, looks like one point eight million in improvements to the park, instead of actually giving us the fee.
Correct.
Does it identify exactly what they're gonna be doing for that one point eight?
Um, we, we have plans that have gone through Public Works and the Parks Committee and, um, our, our staff review, it'll be not necessarily sports field, but a large open green area, play space, play area, amphitheater, tennis courts, gazebos, restroom buildings, um, it...
Statue of the Mayor.
Yeah, it's, well, we're working on that one, but, uh, it's, it's a very nice, it's a very nice layout, lighting.
HAC, homeless attraction center.
They're waiting for a prettier mayor to come down the pipe.
Okay, so, do we have any timeframe? I know we're starting, working on doing the, some of the access to it and the utilities, but are they gonna go a step further and actually have something that the residents can use anytime soon, or do we have to wait until the whole project?
No, they, they, it will be done before the project is done. Their, their goal is to be, actually, we're holding them up getting this done, it took a while on plan check on this. So, as soon as this is approved, they're ready to begin work on this.
Thank you.
And, and that's my concern, because we gotta do, maintain all of that, it's another, another forty acres.
I wanna poll sixteen real quick for discussion.
Go ahead.
We had a, we had our little subcommittee on public safety meeting yesterday, and got, um, the proposal from our fire chief on his plans for the future, and how he's gonna shape the organization, and, um, I appreciate that, um, but I did say it yesterday, I, uh, feel a little weird, even though I, I know we don't necessarily need that equipment, um, it's like toys, and anytime we're giving away a fire truck, not giving it away, but disposing of a fire truck, I, it hurts me for some reason, I, I don't know why, but, um, I, I wanna have like a hundred of these things, so. That's my personal comment, I realize, uh, there's a necessity and purpose behind it, but, yeah.
I thought this was a nineteen thirty-three model.
No, that's a different one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I said that wrong, they're gonna, they're gonna, they'll sell it, or they'll dispose of it, but.
It's, it's unusual for a small city to have a water tender, it's more likely, it's the kind of thing that a lot of private guys will run a water tender for Cal Fire, so it's, it's just adds, adds extra water capacity in very remote locations, usually forest fires, right?
Yeah, this, this water tender we're talking about specifically here is, has outlived its lifespan, the maintenance of it is, uh, worth, is costing us more than maintaining, so the question would be is, um, we need to get rid of this one regardless, um, because it's just not serviceable anymore for us. So, then the question becomes, do you replace it? And that's why we're recommending not to replace it, because, uh, we have brush engine stuff that are more fitted for what we do, and this water tender, really, what we would use it for is more going out of the city and providing to others, which really, as a small department, isn't really feasible for us, and so, the question isn't so much of just getting rid of this one, that, that would happen no matter what, it's that we're also not recommending to replace this one. We'll let you ride in the new tiller truck when it gets here.
Okay.
Do you have a motion on the consent calendar?
Yes, please.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, thank you. Number seventeen, discontinuation of water service, somebody didn't pay their bill.
Okay, it's easier to present up here, um, well, this is a Senate Bill nine nine eight. What happened to the keyboard?
Oh, it's right here.
Okay, so a little background is, is back in September twenty twenty eighteen, the governor signed a Senate Bill nine nine eight, which is called Discontinuation of Residential Water Service. And the intent for the SB nine nine eight is to minimize the number of residential customer who lose access to water due to their inability to pay their water bill, and provide additional protection and procedural requirement before the residential water services can be shut off. So, the city requirement for the SB nine nine eight is, is to adopt a written policy concerning residential water service shut-off for non-payment, and, and following the procedures prior to shut-off for the water services by February of first of twenty twenty. Little discussion, SB nine nine eight prohibit the city to shut off the residential water service until the account are at least sixty-day delinquent, and require seven business-day notice before shut-off. The shut-off is prohibited if, one, the shut-off poses a serious threat to the health and safety of the resident, the customer demonstrate an inability to pay in full, and the customer is willing to create a payment plan. So, if the customer failed to completed the payment plan, or failed to pay their subsequent bill for sixty days, the water service will be shut off five business day after the final notice is posted, posting. And the posting place had to be in the place that, that is permanent in, on the resident, on the property. Further requirement for this SB nine nine eight, the city must develop a written policy... Further requirement for this SB nine nine eight, the city must develop a written policy to dis- discontinue water service for non-payment. The policy must include all of the following. First is a plan to defer or reduce payment. B, alternative way for payment schedule. C, formal process for the customer to contest or appeal the bill. And D, phone numbers for customer to contact to discuss the option to avoid shut off of non-payment. And two, the city must provide a written notice to the customer no less than seven business day before shut off. The notice must contain the following information. One, customer name and address, the amount of delinquency, the date of which the payment or arrangement for the payment is required in order to avoid a shut off. And D, the description for the process to apply for extension of time to pay the delinquent charge, charges. E, a description of the procedure to petition for the bill, review and appeal. And F, the description for the procedure by which the customer may request a defer, reduce, or alternative, or the payment plan, including a, a amortization for the delinquent service charges. And three, I'm gonna go too fast, I'm just gonna read this thing. The city must attempt to provide notice to renter, a tenant, and mobile home resident concerning the water shut off. The notice shall state their services may be shut off due to delinquent payment by the landlord. I forgot the D. Additionally, they have the right to become a customer of the city without paying the part, the past due amount of the landlord account, if they meet the city requirement. Four, the policy and all the notification must be provided in a minimum of six different languages and any other languages spoken by ten percent of the city resident. And five, the city must annually post on our city website the number of time the city has discontinued services to the customer due to the inability to pay and report the number of discontinuation to the state water resources control board. Six, the city must waive interest on the delinquent bill for low income, income customers once every twelve months. A low-income customer is the one whose household income is two hundred percent below the federal property line. And if the city is in violation of this SB nine nine eight, the city will face a penalty of up to a thousand dollar per day for each day that the violation occur and for each day that violation continue to occur. So the staff recommend that the city council adopt the following. One is a council bill O dash two, twenty twenty dash zero two, which is to introduce the first reading and set the public hearing. And second reading on, on April the fourteenth, to amend the Title thirteen for the water division. And, and B, council bill R twenty twenty dash O seven, adopt a policy for discontinuation of the residential water service for non-payment. That's pretty fast and pretty long. So that's a summarize of, of the.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's to stop everyone in town from saying, I want a reduced payment?
Well, there was a statement in there.
I don't like my water bill.
If it causes undue hardship, well, wouldn't you say shutting water off, it'll cause undue hardship to anybody?
I was just, I was also thinking about the penalty for when I use too much water in a drought. I mean, can my water be shut off then, but if I don't pay for it, it can't be shut off?
The bottom line is, we have no choice in this, right? This is a state mandate.
Our legislature and their wisdom have imposed these regulations upon us.
They put the dumb in wisdom.
Yes. So it's, it's very convoluted. There are various categories of customers based on income and health and landlord, tenant, and so forth. There are appeal procedures, which were required to follow, notification procedures, which get convoluted depending upon the different categories and the types of notices that have to go and their response. And so it's, it's a difficult process that staff is going to have to work through. I, I'd recommend that we maybe even produce a flow chart that has all these different optional pathways that we'll have to follow, because just picking up the ord, the statute or the policy that we've drafted to comply with that, it, it's not always easy to figure out exactly how to proceed. So it's going to be a learning process. We haven't been terminating off a lot of customers' water. And it's not anticipated to be used frequently, but we needed to have this in place before we could deal with any of those problems in the future.
Now, is, is water merged in with trash and other stuff?
No, right now, this is residential water only. But there's a couple of things that. There's a couple of, luckily, we have been working on. First, if you remember, I've been, we will be replacing the water meter, meter with the radio read meters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By the end of May, we should have every houses in, in Loma Linda have a new radio read meters. That's number one. Currently, we, we bill every two months for the water. The goal is to change that to a monthly billing. Because with, with two month, two month bill, so we already two month behind. And then if they have sixty days, so that's mean we are forty, only four months behind, are, are collecting the money. So the goal is, is, is go to monthly billing, and, and so that, that will help. And, and another thing that we plan to do is, is the customer, the homeowner, customer can have a chance to go on the, the computer, log into their account, and see their water consumption on a hourly basis. So luckily, we work, work on that, and we, we are doing that. So, so at least we, we will help. Instead of four months delinquent, we be, be three months.
I, I would hope that what they mean by reduced payments is that you owe a back charge of a thousand dollars with a hundred dollars interest, and rather than having you pay eleven hundred dollars upfront, we'll take two hundred and twenty a month for five months in addition to your regular water bill.
Correct.
So it doesn't mean we're gonna lower their water rates so that they can actually afford it, right?
Correct, correct.
Good.
Because, because it, one of the thing is, if they're delinquent on the last bill, they still have to be current on, on their new bill. If not, we really could be. Yes. It, it, yes, it's, it's really bad.
And then how are we supposed to know their, their wage levels? Are we gonna be big brothering everybody's IRS tax returns? And then what happens if Trump moves into town?
We have to notify them of these, of the policy and the options that they have to obtain some kind of relief. And once we notify them, the burden is on them to produce the evidence to fall within one of those categories that would receive some special dispensation of grace, so to speak.
I hope that's correct, because there's a thousand dollar fine per day if we get it wrong.
How much of an issue have we had with this?
Actually, there, there is, you can go back to the requirements. They actually have to meet all three of those requirements, where they have to have a health provider provide evidence that they, I think it's.
This one?
Back further.
This one?
It's the other direction.
It's the last one.
It's the other direction. Two clicks the other direction. One more. It's the health and safety, inability to pay, and a payment plan.
Yes, so they have to meet all three of those requirements.
Okay.
In order to, to qualify for a pain, either a payment arrangement or some other type of alternate schedule.
Have we had much of an issue with this, in terms of shutting people's water off for lack of payment?
We don't have, how many do we have?
Well, we average maybe about ten per cycle. But the new policy changes the, we've had to change the due date. So we actually make them due upon presentation, but we give them fifteen days to pay before they become delinquent. And that starts the sixty, sixty-day delinquent period. So we've had to do that. So before they had twenty days to pay it, then they would be delinquent and then they would have to pay a penalty.
And part of the purpose of my question is, do you see this as demanding more resources to maintain it?
Initially, it will. It will be like an education process to the customers, and then.
I'm talking about staff resources.
Well, I think once we educate the customers, it will be, they'll be more familiar with it. And our customers are pretty good about paying. Like I said, it's just the sending out the notices and keeping track of the new timing. And my staff's pretty good about that. And I think once we implement our new software, that will assist with that as well. So, and like Jarb said, when we decide to go up to a monthly bill, then, I mean, we're looking at options. Some of the notices before, we used to send out a courtesy reminder and the delinquent notices, and we would do those in-house. So now we're gonna outsource the mailing of those through our current bill processor.
Okay.
So.
All right, so we need a motion on this, or this is a first reading. This is a first reading.
Well, it's not a public hearing.
It's the first reading on the ordinance. The public hearing will be at the next, our next meeting.
Right, right.
But the resolution, which is part B, we would ask you to approve that tonight and have that effective immediately.
So we're, we're, we would be approving both O two and O seven?
Well, the one is the ordinance on introduction and first reading, the second is the resolution.
And we should approve both separately?
Yeah, I think they should be separate since it's the first reading, yeah. And one's an ordinance, the other's a resolution, so don't wanna mix them.
Yeah, good point.
So what's your pleasure on item A?
I move approval of council bill zero dash twenty twenty dash zero two.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to introduce on the first reading and set a public hearing and second reading for April fourteenth, twenty twenty. And we will get into more details at the next meeting about title only and all that stuff. So is there any other discussion about seventeen A? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Now seventeen B, R dash twenty twenty dash zero seven.
I think it's Long Art's turn to move a motion.
May I move it?
I hear a motion. There is a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Any reports of councilmen?
General observation, we went biking with my family a couple weekends ago, and we didn't run into any homeless people along the, the ditch. However, there is an encampment of them at the bottom of the bridge by the, where the storage units are, off of Mountain View, the Mountain View Bridge, at the very bottom next to railroad track. There are at least three or four tents and quite a few people there. So that was two weeks ago. I haven't checked back, but you may wanna send someone over there and get them cleared out. And the, I have noticed an uptick of just people wandering around, clearly with no purpose other than just looking for stuff. So hopefully, we're kinda aware of that and increasing arbitrels to address that. So, anyway, that was it.
I've noticed a general shopping cart diaspora. There seems to be a scattering of shopping carts around town. Is that something that we?
Yeah, this, this morning, this morning, we picked up like ten of them along Barton Road, the VA.
Yeah.
What stores?
Historists, you're talking about.
My question is, where are they originating?
Is Walmart?
They're from everywhere. Mostly Walmart and, and Clark's and things like that. So they're going on joy pushes? They're not riding them, right? When you steal a vehicle and then abandon it down the street, it's called a joyride? Thank you. I, I overestimated your humor.
They're supposed to lock up or something if you take them out of the parking lot, yeah?
Staters has the locking wheel, so they are primarily Walmart and Clark's carts.
So Walmart carts lock up?
No, Staters.
Staters, if you take them past those yellow lines, they'll lock up.
Oh, really?
Same thing at Sprouts. If you push your Sprouts cart to the edge of the property, it locks up. You can't even, you can't even get it where you normally push a cart.
Is there, probably not a way to tell if they're originating at Staters and coming south, or if they're from the actual Staters here?
We've had, we even had Food for Less carts and Target carts. They tend to, like you said, they're diaspora. They go all over the place.
Is there, I've done relocations myself, because I have multiple minivans that aren't used for children much anymore, so I use them for carts. But is there, is there a, a store aversion to receiving COVID-nineteen infected carts back or whatever may be?
We, we used to, we used to give it back to the, to the store, but now we've been taken to the city yard. And, and they have to come pick it up, and this way, this way, we know that they will pick it up and clean it or do, because we don't want to give it back to the store, and then it was just people use it again because it's so bad. And a lot of them have trash in it, so that's why we take it to the city yard.
Yeah, I only take the clean ones in my minivan. Okay, any other comments? I have a.
Just to follow up on Councilman Popescu's comment. When he talks about an encampment, because I, I, not recently, but I've heard other complaints about these encampments of homeless people in the canal down there. Whose responsibility is that? Is that a city? Is it sheriff's office, or who?
We, we work with them. We work with the, the sheriff, the sheriff, the Hope team. We have court enforcement, we have Public Works. So what we usually do is, we, we work with the, the Hope team to go out and, and talk to the, the homeless people first and, and talk to them. If any assistant, they will provide assistant, and, and so that's the first thing. And we also give them time, you know, Matt want to say something. Go, go ahead with Hope team for, for homeless.
Yeah, it, it, it depends on where they're located. There, there is, there's an area up behind Taylor's Bar, which is actually the county, but that kinda seems like here. There's railroad property that, that they, that they will camp out in other county flood control areas and things like that. So it, it depends on, it depends on who owns the property. But, but, but generally, unfortunately, it's, it's, there's not a tremendous amount that we can do, because unless you have a victim of a crime, there's not a whole lot that we can do. That's just kinda the, the state of the law now that.
But the property owner should be able to have some influence on that, right?
Well, to, to the extent that they're willing to, to the extent that they're willing to be a victim of something or to, or, you know, to say that they're trespassing, but in many cases, we don't, we don't find that that's the case.
But in terms of what Councilman Popescu is saying, is that county property that?
No, that, that's actually private, 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 they're on, I think, private property at that point, which is part of the, well, probably the right-of-way between the bridge and the. Yeah, so I guess the question is, I'm sure we have an ordinance that says you can't just put up a tent and sleep overnight anywhere you want, so I would imagine that court enforcement come in and say, you're violating, you need to pack up and go.
Right. And then the city, Public Works will, will go in after cleanup.
That specific spot, and we have the Hope team involved in that, we're in there probably every other week, maybe every third week, and kinda move those guys along, and it's a really nice place for them to stay, so they end up back, and it seems to be a recurring event there. And so we, we push them out, they come back, and it's kind of a.
Can we do our interventions frequent enough that they don't grow roots?
Like I said, we're in there every other week, every third week. There's some, without going down the whole rabbit hole of the, the homeless rights and the laws around that. kick them to the curb. We have to go through a specific process. We have to, with the Hope Team, and they're, they are the experts in this, to avoid some fairly, you know, some cities have stumbled big and had some fairly large lawsuits that they've lost over this. So we're, we're very careful that we monitor, do it correctly, and don't just run cowboy and, you know, run these guys out of town, because we have to follow a process.
I have to give Jarb some credit, though. I really believe personally, because it was pretty real to me, because I had quite a few of them living across the street from my house. By clearing out a lot of the overgrowth and stuff like that, that, they don't want, they don't necessarily want to be out in the open. So without going in and violating rights and laws and getting us into trouble, some of the other things that they have been doing, such as clearing, because they reduced those trees, I don't know if you noticed, there along the river, the Wash, behind the storage unit, like all of those trees, he cleaned those things up big time, because there used to be a ton of overgrowth, and there was a lot of tents in there. So I noticed that, and then, of course, down to like Area D, they're pulling out all those old dead trees and stuff like that. All of that, no matter where it's at in the city, it gives them a place to come in and hang out. So I applaud the efforts that our folks are taking within the constraints of the law. Just, we appreciate that.
Because you can either chase them off, or you can make it less attractive to be there. What was our latest point in time count? Do we know?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering, because the prior year was five.
It was probably more than five, but I don't know the exact number. I know off the top of my head, those four or five guys that keep returning onto the bridge, and we probably have as many as eight or 10 guys out along California, just south of Mission Elementary School.
And can you confirm that the post office denizen has exited Stage West?
No, I saw her the other day.
Oh, she's back, okay.
And she, she goes away for a while, and I don't know if she goes to Hawaii for vacation and comes back or whatever, but she goes away and then comes back.
She went to her winter home.
Apparently, I talked to our Hope Team guys a lot, as Matt knows, and they, apparently, the post office is not very cooperative with them in their efforts to give her kind of like a no trespassing order. Apparently, the postmaster, whoever feels sorry for her. And so because she has so many people that keep feeding her and giving her food and stuff like that, the Hope Team has not been able to get her to accept any services or other housing. As crazy as this whole, maybe we should have them come in and talk again about how all this works, but it's really amazing, and I forget what they say. It takes like 70 tries of a person before that person will actually accept some type of assistance. And so there's all these county programs and stuff that are available, and these guys keep a record. Every time they contact, you know, Ron Daley, they write it down, and I offered him this and this on this date, and they have records, and the average is like, it takes 70 times to get somebody to actually go, okay, I'll let you place me somewhere. And so it's just bizarre, really, how all this stuff is just kind of working, but...
There's a lot of factors.
Yes, there's a lot of, a lot of factors and...
She angrily denounces anyone who tries to help her also. She's got quite a track record.
They know, they know her, they know her pretty well.
Yeah.
So...
The best offer was for someone who wanted to transport her to Orange County. I was in favor of that one, and she turned it down as well.
And there were some other things. I, again, you guys may be seeing something different. I, you know, I don't, I'm not around town during the day, but I feel like some of our numbers have gotten slower, smaller, because there were some other, I'll say conjecture, that potentially other cities were encouraging their folks to move across the freeway or to come west. I'll leave it up to your imagination what cities those might be, but, you know, they have better living over there, and it's the blue zone, and it'll be good for you.
They might possibly be adjacent cities?
Possibly could. And so although I have, although I have no actual proof of that, the deputies that work with these homeless groups, the homeless people have told them they encounter city employees from those specific jurisdictions who tout the attractiveness of our community. So unfortunately, this is a problem that people shuffle around from place to place, and, yeah.
I do have to say, I haven't seen as much panhandling as I was seeing for a while. I mean, it got pretty bad for a while, but...
For the last year or so, we've been fairly aggressive with engaging the Hope Team, Code Enforcement, the Public Works with the work they've done, getting the recycling center removed out of the Stater Brothers lot has made a big difference.
Oh, really?
And as, as our Code Enforcement and Public Works people are driving around, if they see somebody setting up camp, they encourage them to find someplace new, and we clean up after them as quickly as we can, too, so it's not an inviting place. So it's been a long effort to get to where we are today.
Okay, and I've got another announcement to relay. The Board of Supervisors has graced us with a county declaration of a local health emergency over the COVID-19 virus. And although there are no local cases in the county, there are some in adjacent counties, including the Coachella Valley. There's quite a little focus there. And the purpose of this declaration, quote, "is not to alarm people, but it's a local health emergency, but to increase the focus on preparedness for both the public and county government departments and agencies. The risk to the general public in San Bernardino County remains low at this time." And then they give advice on hand washing and whatnot. And then they say that this is, the preparedness and response program is activated at level three, which is a low level, and the ISMA is activated at level two, and the operational area, emergency operations center, is not activated, but continues to monitor to see if they should. And they're specifically saying, do not cancel public events because the risk remains low at this time. So I'm sure this is temporary as things progress, but we'll get some updates.
Hey, I'd like to, since we're nonpartisan here in this body, and there's all kinds of information, I'd like to take advantage, again, for the three people that are watching at home. From the physicians here on the dais, I mean, is, what, do you want to say anything, or now you don't have to? I'm putting you on the spot, but...
Well, I don't want to unnecessarily frighten the community, but one of the nice things that we hear about this, that's a little bit better than the traditional news, is that the death rate that's reported from China is exaggerated, most likely, because they don't, China didn't test enough people to find out what the denominator was, so they thought fewer people were infected than actually were. And in Korea, they did massive testing of the general population and discovered that the death rate was about 0.5% instead of 3.5%. So that's better news than, you know, 1 in 30 people dying. It's more like 1 in 200. And the standard flu has a death rate of about 1 in 1,000, so it's probably only about five times the death rate of the standard flu. So it's not as bad as it was thought to be. And my personal belief is that the, the economic consequences of shutting down the entire US economy over this virus could potentially be a larger threat to our future than the virus itself. So I think there needs to be a reassessment at the government level about, about the degree of panic that's going on. And I'm not trying to downplay it, because we don't have complete data on its transmission rate, nor do we have data on its true mortality rate and morbidity rate. And until then, it's, there's a lot of speculation. But I think the degree of panic that's going on right now, and, and once the attempts to contain it have run their course and it's escaped all attempts to contain and goes essentially, yeah, goes viral, then I think we'll stop doing all this, this pulling people out of work, pulling people out, just on the risk that they might have been exposed. Eventually, everybody's going to be exposed if it goes like typical viruses. And once that happens, then there'll be a lot less of this preemptory economic slowdown behavior that's going on. You know, it has the potential of, of, of snowballing through the economy if everybody stays home from work. Nobody buys anything, nobody goes to work. You can imagine the economic downturn that would happen. So I think that's a huge risk that shouldn't be downplayed either. That's my comment. Anything?
Yeah, I think the South Korea thing was, is very important, because I think the denominator wasn't big enough, and in America, we're not, we haven't really tested much. So it scares people, because the death rate looks a lot higher than it probably is. And also, most, mostly below 60, it's almost not fatal at all, age 60, unless you have your immunocompromised or something like that, and then it goes up as you, as you get older.
Are you scared?
Yeah, because I'm 61. But really, the thing is, it's just, it's just like common sense precautions, like everybody tells you to do. Wash your hands, keep your hands away from your face, your eyes, your mouth. Don't shake hands with people. And, you know, if someone's hacking around, get away from them.
I'll chime in only because I have a different viewpoint. I, I think we need to really seriously look at this, and I'm not going to be around to necessarily deal with it, but I think we're going to have a very different conversation in 30 days. I don't think we can rely on just one country's data. I mean, I'm looking, Italy's death rate is 6%, you know, Japan's 3%, and that may seem irrelevant now, but some of the stuff that I'm seeing and reading says that we're going to have a very different conversation even 10 days from now if this thing explodes the way it's exploding in some of these countries. And I don't agree with the county's assessment that we shouldn't cancel any public events. I think it's a good thing to do it. I mean, some of the universities have already started, UCR, it's, they're not even going to do any more classes for spring quarter, and I think that's very proactive, because the way, best way to kill this thing is to basically not interact with people. So we as a city, there's not a whole lot we can do, but I would advise you all to really look at it and come up with some sort of action plan, because the first thing that most people are going to do is look to us, you know, for advice. But I think what we need to be aware of, and I think the mayor alluded to it, we're already seeing people panicking and buying stuff, probably prematurely or whatever. However, when we do start doing massive testing and our count goes from 1,000 to about 10, 20,000, you're going to see massive panicking. And I think at that point, you're going to have a hard time finding food. So my advice is just be aware of the fact that we may have some, you know, disturbances and things of that nature, and we may not have any case in San Bernardino County, but I think within a week, you're going to see some. And if you look at the impact it's had on cities like Seattle, it is, you're shocked. And then if you look at what's happening in Italy, every single hospital is completely overwhelmed. They might say, ah, it's only the flu. Well, when we have flu seasons, our hospitals are not that overwhelmed, where people are working day in, day out, and you don't work with casmat teams because, oh my God, I'm going to get the flu. Clearly, people are concerned enough that they don't want to catch this thing. And it's, what's more interesting is that people react quickly. I mean, just to agree with perspective, when the flight came in into March, they were inundated with phone calls at the county level and the city level saying, how dare you let these people come in? So I think we're misestimating the reaction the public will have when this thing actually really takes off. So my advice is be prepared, because it can get a lot worse than it is, so.
We have nothing to fear but virus itself? Or does fear, does fear of fear have anything to do with it? I think it's a mix. But any reports of officers? Okay, then the city council itself is adjourned, and we have two more agendas to get through. Let's start with the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda? Hearing none. The consent calendar is there.
I'll move it.
Okay, there's two motions, one of them is a second. And any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any chair and member reports? Hearing none. Any reports of officers? Hearing none. We're adjourned. Next, we have the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, and we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for hanging out for the whole meeting. Appreciate you guys.